Good evening. It is 6 o'clock on May 29th and I would like to call City Council to order. We have a quorum, and so it's 6 o'clock and City Council's called to order.
And 6 o'clock and the Planning and Zoning Commission of Bastrop is called to order.
Yay, so we all, everybody has a quorum and we're gonna rock and roll. Tonight is very exciting. Are you so excited to have your first draft of the code? It's important for folks at home to know that they have access to this and for you guys that have had one, put away your pens and paper, there will be a test on all of the sec-- I'm just kidding. So what we're gonna get tonight is an overview. We all realize within being published on the 24th, I don't think there is any person with the exception of perhaps Matt Lewis that has read absolutely every single word. So that was not the expectation and in fact, getting the executive overview from the Matts, as I like to refer to them, should make, when you do have, as you have time to dig into it, make more sense. Because we're trying to put some parameters around some things and help us all work together. So they'll be kicking it off and then on the second item, we're gonna have a discussion because you guys know that you are an advisory body, you're gonna make a recommendation, but the policy decision will be made by council. But we don't have time to vet through some things and y'all have the expertise. We know that we make a better decision when there's six of us having a conversation. We have talked about that recently. Every one person brings something different to the table. The Planning and Zoning Commission is made up of nine people, that is by charter, and that is so that we are well represented in the community. So your job is to listen to the overview, spend some time with the code, talk to your neighbors. We really need some community input. You guys may not always agree, but you'll take a vote and come up with a recommendation. We won't, may not always agree, but it takes three votes for something to be approved. We're gonna all get through it. We're not voting on anything tonight. Our goal is to have the codes voted on end of October, first part of November. So we're trying to be open and transparent about what the changes are and the very best thing we can do is ask hard questions that make Matt, the Matts go, "Ooh, we hadn't thought about that." Let's make sure we know how that's going to work. Because we would rather know that now, before we adopt the codes, than in December when we've adopted them and now we're like, "Oh gosh, we didn't know anybody was gonna read it like that." So we are so thankful and appreciative of you guys spending time tonight and I know you have a really fun Saturday planned coming up here pretty soon where y'all are gonna spend some hours together. So with that, gonna kick off the work session. Our first item is Item 2A, Discussion on Bastrop Building Code, Building Block Codes with Matt Lewis and Matt Jones. Mr. Lewis.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protim, Council, as well as Chair Commissioners. Thank you all for having us tonight. We're glad to be here. Tonight's the first introduction of the B3 or the Bastrop Building Block Code. That we're gonna be introducing the code and the flow and the process of how development will function within Bastrop under these new, this new document. As we have this conversation, we anticipate there will be policy conversations that spin out of the dialogue and what our ask is, is if we can flag those, we'll whiteboard those and be prepared to have a deep dive on those policy conversations for our next joint meeting that will be on the 22nd.
Matt, where's the whiteboard?
Matt Jones will be our whiteboard.
Can we use that one?
Oh yeah, oh yes.
And can we move it over here where we can all see it so we'll know? Oh, that's already on the whiteboard and we don't have to keep bringing it up. Just a suggestion.
That's great. No, that's really helpful. Thank you. So the workshop on June 22nd will be where that gets handled.
Matt, hold on. Colin, will you make sure that that is placed where you can get the camera on it so that the folks at home can see that as well?
He can mark on it anywhere. I'm not gonna say he's giving it to the camera.
Before we begin, we would really like to thank the contributors of the code and the public input that led through this process. This has been a very long and involved, heavily involved process and we're very thankful for everyone that put the effort into this. This was a ton of work. The document before you all is a draft. There are typos, there are reference errors that aren't necessarily aligned. There's questions of who is the deciding authority over the particular elements of the code. All of those types of elements will be resolved by the time that we get the second and third draft as we move forward through this process. So we just wanted to make note of that as we move forward. And as we flow through this today, we will start at maybe a 15,000-foot view and we'll work down. This is one of the illustrative plans from the design rodeo. And so we drew this to show what the patterns of Bastrop, the building blocks could produce with a variety of housing types. And then we had an illustrator, DeeDee Christensen, come in and draw the elements. And what we're doing here is explaining how you create neighborhoods. And the rules that will govern Bastrop going forward will create a series of neighborhoods, complete neighborhoods with accessible places that will be built based off of the same framework that the town founded on, the Bastrop block, the Bastrop building block, which is the informant of the code. And hopefully the long-term goals will lead to places like this, which are now going to be re-allowed and reintroduced back into, as building products, into Bastrop. Right now you don't allow for this type of development. We're reintroducing these types of development opportunities back into Bastrop with the new code. And again, you will get a variety of housing types and they will all emulate the patterns that were originally created in Bastrop, Texas. So with that, let's go ahead and jump in. We are going to start with the intent of the code. The first chapter of the code is generally the general provisions and clauses, severability clauses, applicability, those types of things. The main, the main chapter within the code though is the intent clauses, which links back to the policy, what was it, purpose statement that was adopted by the City Council that anticipated a code that created fiscal sustainability, geographically sensitive developments, and walkability. In order to accomplish that, the code went into three intent statements, at the city level, at the neighborhood level, and then at the building block and the building level. And so as you read through the code, there are about two pages of intent statements just based on those three concepts. So we invite you to really dive into those intent statements to make sure that they capture the overall essence of the community feel and the essence of what the code is striving to accomplish. The second section within the code is the process. We went back and forth whether the process goes in the beginning or the end because generally what's happening is you're introducing the flow of development before the concepts get introduced. We determined that the process belongs upfront. Generally, the development community wants it upfront and generally anyone that's opening the document is going to be interested to see how the flow of the document works with the procedural provisions and the processes. Within the process, we established what's called a Development Review Committee. The Development Review Committee is one member from each department, from FIRE, so the Public Safety, Engineering, Parks, Public Works, Planning, Design, all of those individual members from the departments will be Development Review Committee. This committee in the code is extremely important. They have approval authority if it meets the intent of the code. The collective organization of this team will be, have, will be able to make decisions saying, "This meets the code and we have approval authority." And so it's a very important section to read to ensure that, that everyone is comfortable with the decision authority of the DRC. DRC approves infill development. These are developments that do not need zoning changes. And I'll explain what infill is in just a little while as well. Any new neighborhood plan or regulating plan, as it's called in the code, will require DRC review, Planning Commission recommendation, and Council approval, generally because it will trigger zoning change requests. So the place type identification, which will be replacing zoning, would function under state law in a similar manner as you handle zoning today. So it will be following the same provisions under state law as zoning. Then we introduce character district boundaries. Character districts are the largest regulatory structure within the code and I'll get into those in a little while. And place type locations. Those will be reviewed by the Planning Commission and approved by City Council, per recommendation, approved or denied by City Council. What qualifies as an infill site? Any site that is less than 3.4 acres. And the reason that 3.4 acres was selected is because that is one building block in Bastrop. That, if you look at your blocks downtown, those are 3.4 acres. Anything that's triggering the construction of streets, public infrastructure, would be considered a greenfield development. So if it's already adjacent to infrastructure and it's smaller than 3.4 acres, then it would be administratively approved unless they needed an allocation of place types which would trigger rezoning. I don't know if I'm speaking too fast. Is everyone, alright. Infill, so a street network is established, existing utilities are in close proximity to the site, place types are predetermined, and development would be a by right with Development Review Committee approval, DRC approval, unless again noted by place type changes. So the process, this is gonna remain for infill development and for new neighborhood plans. It is a pre-submitting meeting and site tour. The first step is to go walk the site, look at tree lines. Maybe there's a fence row of trees that needs to be preserved. Maybe there's some elements of the site that will really lend itself to inform the development. The staff team and the applicant team would go out and walk the site, identify any constraints that may break the block structure or any opportunities to really highlight features. So every site has its own constraints and we tried to be very mindful of that, allowing for predictability and flexibility to be coded in all within one document. Being extremely sensitive to the local characteristics and, you know, on-the-ground site conditions. So that's extremely important. Then do an analysis of the legal description, lots of blocks, if it's a platted lot, close proximity, geographic map showing key streets, intersections, and location of the site. Internal street types. In the code, you can select a variety of internal street types that you want to build and so we'll get into that a little bit later.
Before we get, before we get too far into the process, I didn't know if you wanted to touch on how, as we work through this, imagine, or not imagine, so this, this code is what we anticipate people to be able to do by right, alright? So this is what they can do by right when they come in and walk through the door. And if you do the things in these books, after you all have vetted it and approved it and it's on, ready for implementation, this would, this would be a living document that is by right, that's predictable, that produces the outcomes that you all have vetted, heard from the community that we want. Anything outside of that, they can still ask to do it, but that's when they have to come before you all. So this document is essentially what they, their playbook that they could do by right and administratively through the DRC process. Anything outside of that, not saying you can't do it, but we're saying you're gonna have to come talk to P&amp;Z and Council before that happens. So keep in that mind, or keep, kinda keep that in mind as we're going through these processes.
So I have a quick question. If you're brand new to Bastrop and the idea of an infill development, that's a pretty, most people know what that means. You know, it's not greenfield, it's infill. I'm interested in infill development and I look at the table of contents. How do I know where to start?
In the code?
Yeah.
So generally, development codes, no one's going in them just to read them like a book. Generally, you're gonna go in with the intent of what you're trying to accomplish and the, the section is housed within the document. And so the codebook, like the introduction of this, starts at the highest level of regulations and works down to the smallest level. So the infill is pretty deep into the book. And so as you, if someone was new to the code, it may take them the first time to read through these steps to realize that infill doesn't trigger them. Each section shows that's exempted from those standards if it's less than 3.4 acres. And so the initial time you're new to Bastrop, you're reading through it, you may read some sections before you get to the infill section that says, "Hey, you're now infill." But what you'll keep having happen is it's gonna keep noting that you're less than 3.4 acres and it will default you back to the chapter for infill. The other thing that the City Manager brought up, we are gonna build a flow chart to show how this flows. It's not in the current document. That will be really helpful.
And I would also say that it seems that the three-quarter acres, that's a really important part and when you go to the definitions, it's not in there.
Yes ma'am, we're aware.
Okay.
I gotta fly.
Yay, okay. I'm just trying to think of, if you've never looked at it before, how can we make it easier?
Yes ma'am, and Matt did note that it is on page 13, you know, so you'd hit that point where you realize that infill is for the section two of the process. That's a great question though, Mayor.
Okay, I, I know, and I would have thought it was in process and it's in section two and two point, what, what, what? And I'm not trying to derail us, I'm just saying, you know, if that's sort of a big thing.
I, I think that we've agreed internally that that will be kind of the last exhibit we add. Because we're gonna go through this, y'all are gonna talk about it and then before P&amp;Z reviews it in September, that chart will be in there. Because once all of the sausage making is done, then we'll sit down and we'll work internally from staff and with Matt to put a flow chart so that that's very easy. Because the other thing that will be a part of this is gonna be the checklist and the, the application process so that when y'all adopt this, it's turnkey. But we can't get to that to the end, but before y'all formally adopt this, all of that will be in there.
So Chairman Moore, I would say that's a perfect thing for you guys to vet. Does the flow chart make sense? Do you understand it? So you're real clear about what's coming to P&amp;Z, what's not coming to P&amp;Z? That's a great thing for you guys to work through and then that would be a deliverable that Council would know Planning and Zoning understands this and this is what they've agreed to. And, and you guys may even have like, we think a different decision should be made or, you know, we had a discussion about this point, that kind of thing. Does that, does that make sense?
Yes, and I think you will find through this process that this group of individuals is not shy about making recommendations.
Very shy, very shy group of folks. Okay.
I have a quick question. So that is not in here. And if it is, can you kinda tell us where you're at so that we're not distracted flipping through pages, missing half of what you're saying?
Sure. Jordan, do you know what section this is in?
No, no, no. She's saying your PowerPoint.
Oh, your PowerPoint.
They're, they're looking for things in the PowerPoint in the book and it's--
Oh, oh, the PowerPoint is not in here. No ma'am, this is just the explanation of the code.
It's the executive summary, so.
Yes. Yeah, we can go through the book as well, yes ma'am. This is just going through the individual chapters and how they flow, but if we wanna dive into the book, we--
Well, I just wanted to, like, we're all looking to see where that is in here so we can write notes.
Commissioner, this is just intended to be a high-level context, not for y'all to flip around, just for you to absorb so that when he gets the book, you have some framework to do it. So it's okay that you don't know where this is. That's part of the introduction.
Yes ma'am. And so the next one is neighborhood plan or regulating plan. And so this was one of the questions we would like, you know, maybe this is a policy question, whether a regulating plan is appropriate term or new neighborhood plan. We're playing with both of these concepts. It's essentially going to be the same type of, excuse me, process. New neighborhood plans would be greater than 3.4 acres and the first step would be to review the character district standards. Then you would go into the place type, or the prescribed place type changes if you needed to allocate place types. They would be reviewed by the Development Review Committee and then presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission and to the City Council. And so this would actually require zoning allocation and changes. This would be brand-new neighborhoods. And so this will be an example of a new neighborhood plan. This is a real site in Bastrop that is greater than 3.4 acres and so a new neighborhood plan may submit something like this. And it shows where building types go, your street layout, configuration, setbacks, that type of thing, housing mix. And that would be their concept plan and then they would assign place types. And so that would be an assignment of place types and that's the process for how you would analyze and start to submit new neighborhood plans. This was one of the examples we did through the design and code rodeos to articulate how this would all function. For new neighborhood plans, again, the first step in the process would be meeting and onsite walking tour. And so you would go into where the site, look for, you know, physical constraints, identify any key features that are highlighted, those types of things. And then step one would be submitting the regulating plan or the new neighborhood plan. Step two would be the public realm and plating, and I'll get into these details. But those are the plating procedures that generally is handled for creation of lots. The public realm, the, well, I'll get into it in just a second.
Ma'am.
And then private realm. Yes, sir.
Have you defined character district and place types?
Yes, sir.
You have?
Yes, sir.
To the, this whole group?
We're about to do it right now.
Okay.
What a great segue. Look, you were the next slide.
Thank you, Councilmember. Character districts are the largest geography and the intent with character districts is to create identifiable places and identifiable details that which create places. So if you think of large cities, they may have like a museum districts at Bastrop, cultural arts districts, right? And so you target for particular styles to be had. And so in the code, there are character districts, there are 18 character districts that get introduced that will all have its individual charm or character that would get coded. The coding standards aren't necessarily different for every district. There are some standards, regulations that actually do change based on your character district.
One of the things that Council challenged us with, with their purpose, is geographically sensitive and authentic Bastrop. And so when we were struggling to ensure we didn't have a one-size-fits-all code, the character districts allowed us to meet two of the three intents of their purpose statement. Because the character districts are based around neighborhoods that when you drive them make sense, either from geography or history, the existing structures that are there. An example is the new section of downtown. Every one of you know where that is. So we kept it the new section.
New addition.
So we didn't change it because everybody in town knows where the new section of Bastrop is. New addition, sorry. No one knows where the new section is. The new addition. So when, when it already was identified, we didn't challenge that. And that allowed the authenticity of that area to stay authentic, recognizing the geographical elements that make it work and we didn't take a one-size-fits-all approach. So there are 18 because when we really began to dissect Bastrop and meet the challenge that Council gave us, that's where we came from. So I think when you get into it and begin to understand the definition, you'll go, "Oh yeah, that's exactly right. That's such-and-such." And that's exactly what we were trying to capture was the such-and-such.
And so then this is currently just a draft character district map showing how the districts start to get integrated. The next section is development patterns. The development pattern that is prevalent in Bastrop is traditional neighborhood development. It's a gridded network of streets. Traditional American cities were all started and founded with a gridded network of streets. It's the building block of Bastrop. Bastrop was, started off with farm lots and those broke down in the building blocks. That pattern continued. We've written the code so that traditional neighborhood development is the preferred pattern of development in Bastrop until and unless the grid gets interrupted by physical constraints, topography, or the land area doesn't lend itself. And so where the land area doesn't lend itself to traditional neighborhood development, you'll notice on the development chart as it corresponds with the character districts that they're permitted or not permitted based on the topography grades, the aspirations of the individual characteristics, those types of things. So again, traditional neighborhood development is the gridded network of streets and the blocks. It's the patterns that we're very familiar with. Cluttered land development, sometimes called conservation subdivisions. What you do there is it's a, you preserve majority open space. 50% of the land area would be preserved and the houses and the buildings would be clustered in small little pockets rather than built out in an orderly manner. And what it does is it provides the ability to create additional park space, handle stormwater management into the actual development, and provide a different lifestyle. So rural developments, if you wanted maybe big estate lots or those types of things, could function well within this type of area, as well as a series of small tiny houses in a little courtyard setting. You have a variety of housing types in this development pattern, but the intent is majority of the land is preserved in open space. If you're building in the Lost Pines area in the Houston-toad Habitat, they actually have this coded in as a requirement. And so we're trying to align those provisions for this development pattern to match the patterns that the Bastrop County-toad Habitat has as well. And the third is the most urban and compact. It's a village center type of development pattern. And in this development pattern, the preferred way that it's written currently is that single-family detached houses would not be allowed in this. This, these are, is a development pattern that's dense. The, generally all of the streets are pedestrian-oriented first and all of the parking and traffic vehicular flow happens on the peripheral and the outside of the neighborhood. There is no interruption into the public realm from the streets in those village neighborhoods. So you can picture a little, you know, English village or, you know, those types of things, hamlets. Those, that style of development. This development pattern may not get built or you may have a developer that comes, builds a small little pocket of it. We don't believe that this is going to become a large development pattern or a prevalent pattern. And even if it does get built, we don't anticipate it being more than a few acres just based off of the, you know, retail market, the actual, you know, allowance for the style of development. But, I mean, again, someone may come in and find that Lost Pines is perfect for this or, you know, Mayfest Hills is a perfect site for this and integrate that type of pattern. So those are the areas that were preferred and the individual development patterns. There's more details, of course, in the code. Next section is place types. It's section five of the code. Place types replace your zoning. So just translate place types to zoning. That's, that's the new zoning classifications. And so rather than having, you know, 15, 20 zoning classifications, now you have five and six zoning classifications. P1 is nature, place type 1 is nature, place type 2 is rural, large lot. Place type 3 is neighborhood. It's what you've got. It's your neighborhood, a series of residential houses and it is residential in use. P3 only allows residential and home office. There is not commercial allowances within the place type 3. Just wanna make sure that that's aware. Place type 4 is mixed. This would allow for residential and commercial and office in house form structures. So not retail form structures like you have on your Main Street, house form structures like Tracy's Grocery Store or Gloria's Flowers or, you know, the little shops going toward Water Street in, in Maine. Little house form retrofits. And Bastrop has several prevalent buildings that are already retrofitted into house form structures. So that's the next level of intensity. And then the highest level of intensity is P5 core. It's representative of your downtown Main Street. The way that it's written is, I think, three stories max within the downtown area and five stories elsewhere. And so all of the other districts would allow for five stories. Some of the districts, as you read through these standards, don't allow for P5 to even be built within those areas. So if you read through the individual standards, it varies and those are the types of things that we think could be policy conversations as far as heights, those types of things in the future. Here's a physical breakdown showing how it works. P1, and you'll notice--
Just because I can't resist. Part of the Council is gonna be confident at 3 and Councilmember Nelson, rural, rural max is what?
None.
27, 29 stories, what was it?
Please carry on, Matt.
It's a, you'll notice that the patterns of development, so what this graphic is showing you is plan view and then street view, if you will. So you'll notice that the plan view is on the lower edge and then once you see the buildings go vertical on that line, it starts to, oh, I have a pointer here actually, don't I? I forget that this works. Okay, here's, here's the transition right through there. And so the intensity increases as the place type goes up. And the last place type is employment center and it's intended for development patterns that are not lending themselves to these other patterns. You may have additional parking and, you know, bigger buildings that break the block structures. Those types of things would be employment centers. Any employment centers are going through a review process. The Planning Council would see employment centers because they basically get to use the formula and write their standards. And so it would be for economic development, for large industry, office complexes, those types of things would function within an employment center zone.
So I'd just like to make a comment for those of you that you didn't see the workshop where this was discussed. The idea is that sometimes through EDC, folks come and say, "I wanna build a 20,000-square-foot warehouse and, you know, it would be a logistics center or it would be a whatever." An employment center sometimes can be in someone's house and you don't know whether it's a duplex or a house or they've got three small businesses going on. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about somebody's come to town, they wanna bring a large number of jobs, they're looking for a place where they know they have a chance of getting something passed through zoning. And so EDC said, "If you look at your land use," and the only thing you guys are talking about is different types of neighborhood and there's, and we're going away from the traditional zoning-- it looks like we're not interested in having any business or any industry. And for fiscal sustainability for the city and also for employment centers and for our, our citizens, the multimodal, it's, it's helpful if you can live, work and play inside the city limits. And so it was important to make sure that we note different areas where it's not guaranteed, but it's, um, from a desirability. We'll even be looking at utility availability, all, all kinds of stuff that would make things a desirable place to have an employment center. So that, that's, that might be somewhat new to you, but that, it's all driven from the idea that, um, we have to have some industry. That's part of how you're able to stay in business and keep folks employed. Does that make sense, planning and zoning? Okay.
We also, uh, staff and I did meet with, uh, BEDC and went over, uh, several sites that they had selected and, and made sure to code the ones that they had, uh, anticipated in to conform with those standards.
Matt, can I just ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have, um, what used to be residential, which is now P3? Uh, will P3 be moving, will there be P3s moving to P4s? Definitely probably not P5s, but P4s, will there be some neighborhoods going into P, mixed use?
That, yes, ma'am. So, um, this map here is a direct translation of your existing zoning, uh, map into, uh, the intensity zones. So this is a translation of your zoning map. There are areas where that may be applicable, right? And so there may be areas, um, and this is a policy decision. Do you do that at the time that you're actually adopting the ordinance or do you make them come through the process once the process is adopted?
Shockingly, I have an opinion. So I believe if you are a single family, if you are an SF7, it doesn't matter where you are inside the city limits. If your property is currently zoned SF7, then it should translate to a P3. Everybody should have a translation chart of this is my existing zoning, this is what my new zoning would be. The, the question that you're asking is, once you're in a district, if you were in the Meadows or you were in a particular district and maybe currently right now, the only thing that's zoned is SF7, nine or something bigger, and that would only be P3, if we look at this and say, you know, the truth is, given our goals and our vision, P4 would be allowed, then there will be a chart in here that says, and I'm picking Meadows on a, a certain character district, P3 and P4 is allowed. Just like right now, you can't change your current zoning to a new zoning without coming to planning and zoning. If someone, I'm living in a P3, but I have this idea and it means I have to go to P4, they would have to come to planning and zoning and say, I want to do a P4. Here's my lot, here's my plan, here's what I'm getting, and it would be a zoning change. And we had had a conversation about, did we want to try to pre-say only a certain percentage of the total area could be P4? You know, do you want to try to dictate that ahead of time? I think we kind of fell on the, let the market drive it, but, um, and, and so there would be a, a conversion of the zoning, but we would give some direction. If we're not going to allow P5, then we shouldn't make someone think if you asked for P5, you had a, you have a chance at it. So it's not gar, if, if the character district, if I'm understanding it correctly, Matt, if it's, if that character district lists P3, P4, it means that it's allowed, but it's only allowed if it's approved.
It, it allows them to submit the request.
Yeah. Cynthia, let me, let me further complicate this a little bit. Um, we have a PowerPoint presentation that we showed council that Matt will show you that, um, Matt Lewis and his team went through and actually analyzed what is there and the vacancy rate. So for instance, um, go to the character district map. In downtown, right now they're already P4s. Cause if you think about around the courthouse, there is an attorney's office, you've got some bail bondsmen, you've got some dentists that are already in houses. So the correct zoning for that would be P4. So, um, part of what council looked at was the vacancy rate. If there, if it's already built on Old Town, uh, the residential portion of Old Town, I think there's only one vacant lot in the whole place. So if everything in Old Town is P3, that one lot needs to be P3. So some of this will be self-evident as you begin to look at the real data. Um, there are some areas like downtown that makes sense for P3, P4 to be an option, um, because I think the doctor has a house, um, where his office was that's for sale. It could go to an office, but somebody might buy it and want to go back to a house. Well, it's optional, let the market drive that. Um, so there's some other areas where you may be fine with that transition and that's the policy conversation. And there may be some where you say, no, it really doesn't need to transition because we really like that neighborhood aesthetic. But one of the things that council found helpful was, let's analyze what's there, what's up for discussion and in some instances it isn't worth discussing. There are other areas where there's a lot of green fill opportunities that it's worth y'all really debating and we'll share that PowerPoint with you.
But, but infill or not, if the character district allows a P4, somebody might be in a P3, own a P3 and want to request to go to a P4.
Yes.
So then it would have to be allowed in the character district. So we, we didn't want to get into, it's a take, it's a down, it's a, be consistent, but then have a, a vision and a plan of ultimately what it could look like. Is, does that make sense? Did I say that right, Matt?
Yes, ma'am.
Council, are you, is that how we landed or is that not where you thought we landed? Okay. All right.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And then I may be jumping ahead again. Um, if you have a P3 and want to go to a P4, uh, that goes to P and Z or that's automatic if it's already allowed?
Uh, no, sir. It would go before the planning commission and the city council for approval, um, in the same process that you handle zoning.
It's a zoning change.
It's a zoning change and it would be handled-
Even if it's already allowed in the character district?
It would be a zoning change and so it would have to follow all state law procedures on that.
Got you.
But, but the intent of the chart is, there's no point in applying for a P5 if it hasn't been, you know, you, you just know it's a harder hill to, to climb.
Council member, the way I would word that is, is it gives, um, staff coverage to strongly recommend approval because it's in accordance with the plan that you've adopted.
And it gives some predictability to the person who owns the property and has an idea. Okay, this is what's allowed, this makes sense, it fits in with your vision. And I think when we define our expectations and then make decisions based on those expectations, I think it makes our city attorney very happy when we follow the vision we said we were going to do.
I'd just like to add one, one thing also that when someone's buying a house and they're in that character district, if they know it's a P3 and a P4 could be allowed, then they could be, when you're buying a house, you're aware that something could in that area be zoned commercial because it's allowed in that section. Not that somebody next to me is, but I'm just saying, in case Cynthia decides to build something there, you know? Just so that way, when you're buying a house, you can now look at the zoning and see what may be allowed in that area.
Just to make sure, I, I, I have to paint a picture of things. So let's say I'm in my house now and everything in my neighborhood is P3. But let's say it's, it's a P3, P4 mix. And I become a real housewife and I'm going to move to the colony and buy me a big mansion. But I want to make my, my home that I have now, um, into a hair salon. So that was, that would be the P3, P4 mix. And it's a house and it looks like a house and I'm going to rent out the rooms and people can rent out spaces, right? What if I'm going to make it into, um, what I have, well, first of all, would I have to come to P and Z to turn that piece of property now into a hair salon?
If it was zone P3, yes. If you had P4 and you were using it as a house and now you want to convert it to a hair salon, you're going to go through just the remodel process.
Okay, so that answers my question then. So my, my home right now is a P3. If we were to make that area P3, P4, even though it's in a, your, my home is still classified as a P3?
Yes, ma'am.
Right, got it.
And when you go through that zoning process, just like now, everybody around you gets notified, everybody gets to come say, I don't want a hair salon next to my house. And I, and so P and Z then knows, they have an opportunity to say, this was the intention, P4 is allowed, but we aren't specifying, um, specific uses. So then there, there's an opportunity for a discussion and there's a basis for a decision. It's, it's not an automatic approval. It, it's like, you know, welcome to all the other fun zoning changes that you guys, cases that you've looked at. Did you have a question?
Yes. Uh, will each of the place types have a list of uses so that some uses will be allowed and some won't?
The, uh, way that the code is written currently, um, we're only regulating nuisance uses out rather than coding all of the individual particular uses in. Um, if there are particular areas where maybe intensity of uses should be a conversation, again, that would be another level of policy conversation.
I have a follow-up question.
But, before you do, I want to just make sure for people watching at home, um, we've taken the position that if you can regulate light, sound, odor and noise, and none of those are obtrusive to you next door, do we care what it is? Because there is no negative impact to you as an adjoining property owner. So when you review the use statement, because that's one of the things that will be on your, your policy review list, is we, we need to make the things that aren't going to be obvious and impactful, okay by right. And then only debate the things that we can't manage through nuisance ordinances and make special provisions for those in special places or decide that there's such an impact, we don't want them. And that's the policy recommendation that council will need from you because they will be the final decision-making authority. But to what Matt says, we're working very hard to not have a 14-page list of uses. We're looking to have a very short list of thou shalt nots.
And you said you're a follower?
Um, so I guess you've answered it for the most part, that's not going to be part of what you're looking for with a traffic, traffic impact analysis or, you know, if I were a neighbor, in a neighborhood and someone buys a couple of lots, combines them into a larger, uh, business and there's a lot of parking, you know, up and down, so it kind of changes the character of that, how would you address that?
So the character, everything is character-based and so all of the individual place types are going to be character-based. And so if you have a large, um, building, you're, you're going to have to make sure that the building types fit within the place types. I'm about to introduce that next. The code actually regulates by building type rather than use. And so the intent is that the, the intensity of the structures aren't out of scale with the existing structures around it. And so incrementalism is, is the way that it would be handled. Um, but again, you ask a really good question. Let's say that someone came in and wanted to redevelop a full block. They would need to come in for a, um, a zoning change more than likely because of the allocation of place types. And so, um, in that particular scenario, they would need to demonstrate and do a regulating plan. They would have to show where parking goes, where stormwater goes, and it would actually trigger a conversation.
I think he's asking you a different question. They bought two lots and changed the use and it dramatically changes traffic.
So, so here is the other policy question that we already know we'll get, is parking. Um, um, one of the conversations that council had addressing parking was tied to drainage. And what we know is, is that parking creates impervious cover. And it generates runoff that is, um, in some cases, um, detrimental to development. And so what council has done is looked at it and, and rather than having minimums, um, we are, um, going to presenting maximums and in some cases, no parking requirements at all. Um, Matt Jones did an excellent presentation to council that I know he will share with y'all about had we had, um, different parking regulations, what bowlers and crossing would have looked like. So part of the challenge is taking off our traditional hats and being fine with parking on the street in front of people's houses. Um, and looking at parking from a pervious cover, um, where we have unusual building materials or parking materials like crushed granite or something. So that is a complex question. It's certainly the right one, but the answer we would have given you a year ago will not resemble the answer will be given two months from now. So that's part of the conversation y'all will have as y'all take the, the journey with the codes.
So one thing we kind of talked about is, to your point, maybe they're put two houses together. If they don't have kids playing in the backyard, what if there's gravel in the backyard and the parking is, you go down the same driveway, you park in the backyard and if that doesn't impact the neighborhood, do you really care if it, if you can still walk by on the sidewalk and the house looks the same? And maybe two years from there, the market says that business, isn't a business anymore, it can turn back into a backyard and maybe it becomes, uh, two duplexes. Maybe it goes back to being a single-family resident. But we're just trying to think about it in a different perspective. But the idea of how much traffic it generates is, has to be addressed.
Right, and so-
Great question.
The, um, the, the code does not have TIA's in it right now. Generally TIA, uh, traffic impact analysis, um, you know, general codes that have traffic impact analysis, um, are more suburban in nature and they create a series of disconnected streets and that's what's warranting the traffic impact analysis because you're queuing up, um, one street rather than disseminating the traffic between a series of blocks. With the traditional neighborhood pattern of development and the mandatory street network, we believe that the, the volume of traffic is going to be dispersed in such a way that the natural flow would eliminate the necessity for that to take place. Um, that's the way that it's currently drafted and, um, in the existing code.
I've never seen anybody present a, a TIA that anybody agreed to anyway.
Yeah.
Honestly, has anybody ever had a TIA change their mind?
I think the right answer, since we can't give you an answer, is, is if somebody came in and requested a change in zoning from P3 to P4 to P5, that would be the right question to debate as you make the decision as to whether or not it approved, it's, it's approved, based on the street network that's in place and is going to be put in place. So if we've got an area that doesn't have a strong, uh, network of streets, the right answer may be no. But if they are in a place where there is a gridded network and the street network already exists, it may truly not be a problem. But that would be one of the things when y'all make that decision and make your recommendations, I would factor in because you, you're going to quickly understand that the one size fits all approach doesn't work here.
It could even be a condition of it, right?
That's exactly right.
If you want to do that, then you've got to build this street that now then alleviates the traffic for everybody around. Because they, we put conditions on zoning requests all the time.
And that would be one element they would be required to actually notice the commission on at the time that they would be requesting such a change as well and the council. That's a great question, thank you. Uh, the next section is the place type allocation. Um, for infill developments, um, since we did the translation map, a place type is being identified. And so where there are areas where the place type that was identified as larger than 3.4 acres, that would trigger a zoning change when they came forward anyhow. Um, but it's a way of handling it. All place types are going to be predetermined based on the adoption of the code and the process. New neighborhood plans will be determined by the developer of the allocation of where they'd like to see the place types disseminated and, and how they get laid out. The determinative, uh, determination for place type allocation is the character district would inform first. Next, they would review the development patterns, the network of streets, proximity to existing place types to see how that flows. And then they would do what's called a pedestrian shed analysis. And I'll get into that in just a second here. As, um, a pedestrian shed is essentially a quarter mile. Um, Americans will walk about five minutes, it's a five-minute walk time. And so, um, just like watersheds, it's the same concept. Watersheds off and at some point it's, there's no shed, you're into another shed, right? Same thing happens with pedestrians. And so the intent is to ensure that as development and neighborhoods get built, they're being mindful of the areas and neighborhoods around them and that the integration is, is consistent. And so that evaluation and the way that the code reads would ensure that that occurred at the time that the new neighborhood plan or the regulating plan got proposed to the, to the DRC, to the planning commission and to the city council. That was the intent with the allocation of the place types. Um, and here's the allocation, general place types that we recommend. Uh, nature would vary, rural would vary, um, P3 would range from 10% to 35%. P4 would go from 25% to 75%. P5 would go from 5% to 20%. This is ensuring that you get a delineation of, of uses. A developer to come in and, and absorb all your retail market for the next 20 years necessarily in one building, right? One 27-story building. So, you know, I'm just saying.
No, Alan, we never let it go.
And so that, that's the intent is to, to get that distribution, but also, uh, to ensure that you create neighborhoods and not subdivisions. This will ensure that there's civic space, which is parks, uh, in and around these areas and that, um, so that's, that's essentially the establishment. We did an initial, uh, take on this evaluating the downtown, um, allocation and we believe that council was not real big on it. We think this is a better opportunity to solve that issue and still get your distribution that you're striving to accomplish.
And we have yet to get feedback and this may be one of- And we have yet to get feedback, and this may be one of those things that the developer community may have a different perspective on this.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct. Section 6 is the public realm. The public realm is the space between the buildings. It connects people to places. It's the streets, it's the parks, civic buildings, libraries, the library space outside of that, tree placement goes, sidewalks, turn radiuses, curbs, stormwater, infrastructure, all of those, what we're calling the public realm. This is one of the first codes to separate the public and the private realm. Being in Texas, we feel that we wrote a very pro-Texas type of code. One, by not requiring, you know, the uses. Second, there is no minimum lot dimensions. You can build lot dimensions as you see fit. It allows for, you know, small parcels to be sold, so you get a lower barrier of entry for entrepreneurs, for people that want to have a shop house or different housing types. And so the interaction between the public realm and the private side of development is really critical. And what we did is we used the standards of Bastrop from the DNA to write these development standards to ensure that those patterns got emulated as we move forward with new developments. And so this would identify where tree placements go, how far the trees need to be placed apart, what type of lighting gets scaled. And all of the public realm criteria are within the code. Furthermore, the street sections, individual street sections would have different standards. So if you're in a rural development, let's say you're building a rural development in P2, well, your street standards would be different than an urban standard. You may have lay-down curbs and bioswells or, you know, bar ditches on the side. The trees would not be in a uniform pattern. They'd meander with the landscape. Your sidewalks wouldn't be in a, you know, two foot off the curb. They'd meander with the landscape for, you know, that type of development pattern, right? And so when you get into P5, it's much more formal. Your sidewalks are articulated at a certain dimension. Your street trees are placed every 30 feet on center. Your pedestrian scale lights are alternating every 30 feet on center. The curb and gutter would probably be the appropriate way of handling stormwater. And so the overall infrastructure, the look, feel, and function of the public realm would be different based on place types. And so what we've done is we've created, I believe, 12 different street types that would match to the place types. And the developers can come in and select the different street types for the different place types. And so it's really providing opportunities, but you're still getting the overall intent accomplished with the individual sections. Furthermore, they would be required to comply with the master thoroughfare plan, if adopted by the city council. This is a draft that shows the continuation of the grid at a farm lot scale that's 722 feet by 722 feet into the city limits and extraterritorial jurisdiction ETJ. One mile statutory ETJ only is what's depicted within the map and within the mandatory street network. And so this is the draft. There may be examples where creeks, tributaries, train tracks would interrupt the grid, right? And so the ability for the developer to change the pattern would be allowed with intentions as long as they were meeting the intent of the code of the farm lot to building blocks. And so within the code and the pattern book, we are providing them a variety of block types so that they would have the ability to select how their developments got built and to transition it by place type into each section. The next section is Section 7. It's where the private realm starts. This is where you start building on your own lot. And in order to accomplish this, what, the way that the code is structured, it breaks the lots down into three layers. The first layer is where your porch goes, your stoop, your bay windows, however you're going to interact with the public realm would be established. And based off of your place type would determine how those public and private realms interact. Again, if you're in a P5, it's very formal, your buildings are going to be brought right up to the street edge. Your parking is going to be very similar as your downtown. These are patterns you already have. It's like walking down Main Street. That's P5. All of your buildings create a continuous street edge. The buildings actually join at the sides. And so the standards would correspond with that. We did put some provisions in there to be flexible, so it's not required to be 100%, but 80. 80% build out at the front edge so that you get that continuous wall. But maybe someone wants to do a little patio or a little courtyard, they'd be allowed to do that within the code, and so it provides options and opportunities. For example, in neighborhood, if you have, the setbacks would vary by your neighborhood and character district. If you have over half an acre, you can go up to 60 feet back for your front lawns. And so it creates a movable building envelope on the lot. So if there's trees on the lot you're trying to dodge, or if there's, you know, features, or if you just want to move your house, it makes it to where you have flexibility in the, it's a movable building envelope, not saying, like your current code says, 25-foot side yard, I'm sorry, 25-foot front yard, 35-foot rear yard, 5-foot side yards, and there's your building envelope. That's the way your current code writes. This doesn't do that. It allows it to move based off.
So Matt, when we went on the walking tour, that's what we saw, right? From the Bastrop?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct. We coded that in. That was exactly what we've done. We've got those standards, we measured them, walked it, and coded those standards to allow that movable building. Oh, I'm sorry, I only did one layer. I was moving on. The next layer is the second layer. This is where the primary structure goes. And so the first layer is movable. The second layer will always be, regardless of place type. Second layer is 20 feet deep. This is where parking gets introduced. In residential, you can park, you know, your garage can go here. And so the second layer is where parking is allowed and the principal structure, front facade, would be introduced. The third layer is the backyard. And we say, what happens in the backyard stays in the backyard. It's private, and that's it.
And as long as it doesn't smell.
As long as it doesn't.
Yeah, I mean, they'll go.
Right. As long as it's not smelling.
All the nuisances.
As long as you're not creating nuisances. And that's the intent of the third layer. Instead of regulating by setbacks, we defaulted to the International Building Code standards. Again, going back to, you know, the appropriate way of creating regulation, we said the International Building Code already established standards based off of health, safety, welfare, and we use those standards rather than writing a brand-new set of standards of how the buildings get separated. Yes, sir.
Will you also include the International Residential Code?
Yes, sir. And you all adopted that as part of it? Yes, sir. That is adopted by Bastrop.
So right now, we're fixing to kick off on June 4th with our Construction Standards Board. We're going to be adopting all-new, the I-Codes, the International Code Council. So it'll be the IRC, International Residential, International Building, International Fire, the National Electric Code. We're looking at the existing building code, property maintenance code. So the last time we did this was in 2009. And so we're going to have fully adaptive, up-to-date I-Codes and building codes to go along with the new codes. And we're going to kick that process off with Construction Standards Board on June 4th.
And the next section within the private realm is buildings. And so what, the way that buildings are getting regulated is by the placement. So if you're building a building on the, where it has an edge yard, this is a typical house, right? They have the side yards and the front yard and rear yard. Those are called edge yard buildings. They have edges all around them. So if you're building an edge yard building, there's an example, that's how it would fit on the lot. And if you're allowing for an accessory dwelling unit or a granny flat or a backyard house, that's how that would be placed as well and how it would be oriented on the lot. Then we have side yard buildings. This is a building type that's not allowed in most cities in the state of Texas, but it's a great product that allows for people to utilize without having to look at their neighbors necessarily. Essentially, what happens, the building gets pushed to the side yard, the front porches face sideways, and at the street level, there's a door that enters into the porch rather than the front facade of the house. And so there's two examples there of a side yard building, and there's intensity of buildings allowed within each of these sections as well. Then we introduce courtyard buildings.
They've got, the side yard, think of zero lot line.
Yeah.
It's a patio home, where it's a smaller lot, smaller house, and you have the beauty of living in a standalone house, but you have, but you do have a yard. Does that make sense?
So long as you meet the, so long as you comply with the international, the I-Codes.
Yes, 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 yes.
So that's where we take care of it, is through the I-Codes instead of through zoning.
And one important note is that each of these building types are allowed under certain place types. For example, a courtyard building is not allowed in P3 because of the intensity of the building. It would be too intense under what would be considered neighborhood. So courtyard is not an allowed building type. Rear yard is not an allowed building type in P3 either. And so, edge yard, side yard, you can build in P3. And P4, you can build side yard, courtyard, and in P5, you can build courtyard and rear yard buildings. Just, so that's the hierarchy. Again, everything in the code flows from least intense to most intense. So anytime you're reading the code, it's always going from least intense to most highest level to smallest level. The entire code is written to flow like that. So as you're going through the code, you know that the intensity is going up, and you know that the scale is actually going closer and closer to the lot level. So it's looking at 30,000 feet to 15, to 10, to 5, to block, to lot, if you will. And that's the flow of the code. And next, we have the pattern book. And the pattern book is a, it's an inspirational document, it's an educational document, and it's a regulatory document. For example, as you go through the process of developing, if you want to see what some of the building types would look like, there's examples of building types in there. If you don't know how you want to assemble your blocks, we have like five or six, maybe more, different blocks that we drew. And we hand-drew these blocks to match Bastrop. They are all configured to the farm lot down to the building block levels. And so the thought is that we could send the development community there for inspiration, for education of the terms, the principles, and it's graphic. And I believe, did everyone receive the pattern book as well? And so as you look through the pattern book, it's graphic in nature, but it also directly corresponds back to these standards. So if a developer doesn't quite know what to do, the educational aspect would be in here, and it's a supplemental to the code. So oftentimes, you'll see in the code, see pattern book for details. See pattern book for details.
Matt, you guys might all want to turn to page 6 and 7 in your pattern book. Because the beauty of that is you'll see the different kinds of creative block design that's in there, and then on the right, excuse me, on the right-hand side, you'll see pictures of the three types of neighborhood development that he's been describing. That's your, the traditional, the cluster, the village, what it looks like. So that's the intent of the pattern book. Yes, sir.
Will you be able to rotate these tables 90 degrees with a kind of small print?
In the pattern book?
Yeah, you know, just take this and rotate it.
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah. Oh, that's odd. Okay. Mine didn't print like that. Oh, yes, sir. That's good. And on page 6, while we're there, I want to just make note, Milosov Sekic sat and hand-drew and scaled each of these two Bastrop standards, matching to the place type, matching to the dimensions of how the blocks would function. Furthermore, one of the challenges, since we know that stormwater is such a critical piece, we integrated stormwater solutions in each of the blocks. So they can function as park space or greens, but they could be stormwater management ponds, you know, in the, when it's flooding. So when it's raining, they're flood ponds, and when it's not, they're soccer fields, right? And so that was the intent with the block structure.
Matt, will this pattern book be part of the code, or is this just a reference that may be used by the developer to meet the codes?
We believe it's going to be adopted as a design guideline. Is that correct? Or is this going to be regular? It's still as up and.
We're still talking about that. And as part of it depends on some pending legislation. Is this a good time to talk about that? It's House Bill 2439.
So the state legislature has approved a bill that is now on the governor's desk to sign, that essentially says that if a building material is approved in the international codes, then we have to allow it. Period. Period, period, period. The challenge with that is that no two environments in the state of Texas are the same. And a one-size-fits-all approach for a state of any size, in my opinion, is dangerous, but considerably dangerous when you think of the size of Bastrop. The Texas Planning Association, TML, as well as the city, are taking the position that this is very bad legislation. Given our history of the fires, we are particularly sensitive to any building material that could be seen as an accelerant. We certainly have experienced floods, two in 15, two in 16. So building materials that can withstand high humidity and floodwaters are slightly important. And then, if that wasn't enough, we experienced Hurricane Harvey in 2017. So wind materials should play a factor. So our argument is you elect a council and a mayor to make those decisions at a local level, and they do a really good job of that. However, if the governor signs the bill, we have to determine what that means. Our attorney has been in contact with the APA chapter in Texas, and some of the smartest people in our industry sit on that board, and they're struggling with what to do with this. So we need that information, not only for the codes to be adopted, but for the Construction Standard Board to know what they can adopt and what they can recommend. So at an operational level, Alan is going to be working with the Matts. And at your Saturday 22nd meeting in June, we pledge to you to be able to present to you what is the legislation, and what do we think it does for us, and what does it mean we now can't do. So that as P and Z, you have an opportunity to weigh in that and factor that into your recommendations before you present those to council. So it's a work in progress. We can tell you we're concerned, but the governor has not signed it. It has an impact, not only from that perspective, but there's also legislation that impacts how we collect development fees and how we calculate for that. So there is a lot relative to development in this state that may no longer be under the purview of our council and will fundamentally change the way we do business. So there are just as many asterisks on this as we can put, because we simply do not know today. But as we know, staff will put together the appropriate information and bring it to both planning and zoning, the Construction Standard Board, and council, so that you know what your authority is or isn't, based on the recommendation of our attorney.
So there's a couple of really important dates. As we know, the session is over. It's sitting on the governor's desk. He has the ability to veto it. If he leaves it sitting, by June 16th, it becomes law. We all remember that from our civics class. So by June 16th, we'll know one way or the other, if not before. If he signs it before, that's one thing. If he vetoes it before, that's one thing. By June 16th, we'll know whether or not it's a law. Your meeting's on the 22nd. If you have a pen with you, it is House Bill 2439. If you are so inclined to share your opinion with Governor Abbott, you should feel free to exhibit your individual right to express your opinion to your governor. Is that, am I, is that legal? Am I doing okay? Are you mad at me now? Too late now, huh?
I thought you understood I remain perpetually mad at all.
Yes.
No, that was perfectly fine. A lot of people understood HB 2439 to just be about the city's ability to dictate building materials. For example, mandate that three-quarter of the exterior walls be brick and masonry. It does a lot more than that. It actually preempts our ability to regulate aesthetic method in construction. I don't know what that is. It's not defined. Is that architecture? I don't know.
Is that color? Is that the tip? On and on. So we're not hiding it from you. We're letting you know what we know as we know it. But circling back, his question is, is this a guideline? Is it intended to be part of the code? And part of that is, we just got to find out where we land on everything. Is that correct, Alan? Or how do you see the pattern book?
That's correct. Matt Lewis just said, if I heard him correctly, that it's a supplement to the deep read codes. I envision it will be adopted by the city council by ordinance. At the very least, it's a guidance document. It's an aid, it's a tool to help people see what's traditional in Bastrop County and what we would like to see perpetuated. To the extent we can mandate some of this, we will.
So it's also, Matt, it's a suggestion. So as planning and zoning is going through, if they see something that they're like, there is no way in the world we would ever want that, or, now's the time to talk about it. And it doesn't mean that we're going to necessarily take it out. You know, I mean, there are a lot of thought has gone into it, but it means we need to have the discussion. Why do you have a problem? Why did we suggest it? Have the discussion, we'll make a decision. So that's why you were all given the copy of it.
Right. And what we'd like to do is consolidate all of these comments so that on June 22nd, we are really prepared to have that dialogue and really go through, or even have some of those addressed prior to that time. But with that, that concludes. I mean, now, next step in this process is go build. And that was, that concludes the entire development process from start to finish, from large-scale to. to small-scale.
Just the housekeeping, as they have comments, do you want them to send them to Matt Jones? What's the best way to collect them?
Uh, if they could, yes, ma'am. If you can send them through, uh, staff, and they'll consolidate all of the comments.
Okay. Are you guys cool with that? So send, send emails to Matt Jones.
Uh, can I, can I ask a question about the lot structure? Can we go back to that slide?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so I just want to understand the, let me take off my glasses. From the, where it says row and then the frontage line, is that row from the street to the front of the property?
Uh, yes, ma'am. That is the, uh, the right-of-way from the street to the front, uh, property line. Yes, ma'am.
The front, and then the, where we get into the second layer, are we saying that the house has to be 20 feet back from the frontage line, or the?
No, ma'am. The first layer, uh, is a movable layer. The only layer that is static is the second layer. So on, regardless of place type, it's, it, what it's specifying is where the front, uh, principal entrance of the building will be. But again, that first layer is movable. Sometimes it's zero, sometimes it's 60. Sometimes it's not regulated at all, depending on, on how it
Oh, okay. So I could move the frontage line back.
The frontage line will always be where the right-of-way meets the private, uh, lot.
You can move the line between the first and second layer.
Yeah, the frontage line is your property.
Okay, all right. Now I'm with you. Okay, so if I wanted to move my house up some, it's not saying my house has to be 20 feet back.
That's correct.
I can move it up closer to the frontage line.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so did anyone take into consideration, um, safety in that regard? And the reason why I bring this up is because if your house is too close to the street, you're risking somebody running into your house, which happened to my grandmother, um, in the middle of the night. And she just happened to see the lights coming through her window and was able to jump up in time. So what, what, or was that even a discussion? Because I, even with my house, I have a fear that there's a ditch right there by my house, and I hear people fly through that ditch all the time. And I'm a good piece off the road, but I'm so terrified that one day somebody's going to fly through that ditch, lose control, and slam right into my house.
That conversation did not happen, but we did look at like site visibility for site triangles, those types of things. But the placement of structures, I mean, you have houses now that are probably five feet off of front, uh, the frontage line and those types of things. They're, they're, the houses vary, um, from street to street, from block to block, and then you have some buildings that are, that are exactly at zero lot line. Um, so we did not consider it from the perspective that you, that you posed at this point. Yes, sir.
Uh, one of these refers to special flood hazard areas and having a minimum of two feet from the base flood elevation. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Um, yes, sir. And I don't know if we want to talk about, uh, this 14, but the, um, the federal government is updating the standards for, um, flood planes and updating the maps. And essentially, um, we would use the information out of those documents to inform what those areas would be. Uh, the intent with raising them two feet above base elevation, uh, that's the way that it's written in the code, is to ensure, uh, as flooding continues to occur or gets worsened, that the elevation is, uh, appropriate above base elevation. Um, there are municipal stormwater system four standards, which you are not, are not , um, applicable to. Bastrop at this time, it is based off of population. Once you have 50,000, it's mandated that it's, uh, two feet above base elevation. Based on the, um, uh, the drainage and flooding issues, we felt that it may be appropriate to have that as a base standard for those areas at this time now, as flooding would only be worse later. And so it's, it's a safety aspect is why it's written in there, sir.
One way it's been treated, and I, boy, I don't want to misquote Clara. I know they're looking at it, and I think they're at a foot and a half, and they're having discussions of going to two feet in the county. Uh, I know there is an ongoing discussion. I don't know if it's been finally adopted. But, um, I know in Pecan Park, one of the things they, the plaits, because, you know, you've got, you know where the river is, you know where that base flood elevation is, so there's a note on the plat that all finished floors have to be above XYZ elevation, period, paragraph. And that's a way of making sure that every house is above the floodplain. It, you know, you may get water in your yard, but you're not, you, you should not, under normal circumstances, flood out your house. But the two-foot, um, I can tell you that I talked to a couple of different engineers, because I wondered if that was the very thing that was going to make their heads explode. And it was like, Connie, pretty much everybody's doing it. And at the end of the day, it makes your, um, home insurance cheaper, and the homeowners, the home builders don't want to build a house that's susceptible to flooding. So, so far, and it doesn't mean it's final, but so far, I really thought they were going to throw a fit, and I'm, I'm just not getting the pushback.
Didn't, isn't it included in the drainage ordinance that was adopted?
Yes. I think, I think two-foot is in the drainage manual, and that's why this is referencing the drainage manual.
Just to follow up to that, I volunteered to help with the Hurricane Harvey, uh, building adjustment in East Texas. And you're right, the ones, the houses that were built up in Orange, Texas, didn't suffer flood damage. The ones that were built round level had two feet or more water in them. So, uh, but they did it a number of ways. They actually infill, they, they built up a site, so they were still pouring a thin slab, and they just looked like little mounds up there. And I don't know if that's a, a deal or not.
I think that's why they're mandating finished floor elevation. How do you get there? It's how you get there. Right? It can be a three-foot concrete slab, it can be pier and beam, it can be a, but it's, right? Water sinks the lowest level. It's, it's, it's just all about the, all about getting above that floodplain.
And that's the beauty of the new floodplain manual and, and the review process, is we look at these things up front now, uh, with the new processes instead of, in the, on the backend with the plat, for example. Um, so we'll be taking a look at that, and the very essence of the geographically sensitive, some of these things may not lend themselves to all areas that will be prevalent when they do the drainage analysis on the site. You may not be able to develop it with some, you know, development patterns, because the geograph, your, the geography of the land and/or the floodplain just won't allow for it. And they'll know that up front, because we'll be requesting that information up front, rather than on the backend of the, of the conversation.
You guys are asking great questions. I am so excited for y'all to dig into the codes and, and make us, make sure that we're having the right conversations. Counsel, this was a pretty good overview for us as well. Do you have any questions or comments you want to share with Planning and Zoning? Mayor Protim?
Well, one of the things that I've come away from this, this exercise, is the fact that we're removing a lot of the conflicts of our codes. And so we're not looking at, at anything in just a single context. We're looking at the context of the holistic project. Am I, am I correct there, Mr. Jones? And, and when you talk about the flooding issues and the drainage issues, you can't talk about those separately without addressing some of the, some of the building block codes that we're putting in place. So that's, to me, and this, I sound like a weird engineer, but to me, that's the exciting part.
All right. With, with that, Mr. Jones, is there?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a quick context and, and kind of update, um, while we're all sitting in the same room. So this is the first time P and Z has had a chance to kind of get an overview with counsel. Uh, tomorrow night at our regular meeting, we'll go into it a little bit further. Um, Matt's done a good job of kind of giving a 100,000-foot level of the, the new code. We'll kind of take it a step further. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about the journey, uh, some of those things. Um, we'll hit, um, on some of the policy discussions. And then what we'll do is we'll set an agenda, uh, that gives us a, a good plan of attack for the remaining meetings that we have. Uh, we have one on June 6th. Uh, we have our, our workshop on the 22nd. Uh, then we'll have P and Z on the 27th, and then, um, and then we'll look at handing those codes off to, to counsel sometime this summer. Um, but what we'll do tomorrow is go a little bit more into detail about that. We can certainly hit on some more questions, but just put a game plan together, uh, that we get the, through this in a methodical, um, way, that's also looking at the, the things that counsel is, has given us guidance to take a look at as a recommending body. Uh, so that's kind of what we'll take a look at tomorrow evening at our, at our regular meeting.
Chairman Moore?
And I would like to applaud everybody that has worked so hard on this, that's been, um, mind-boggling what all of you have gone through. And appreciate the, uh, the rodeos and the input and encouraging public input, and we want to continue to do that. And we, we want to go through this and give it back to you in all due time, but as I think you have seen from tonight, we have people with expertise and who have already dug into this and are looking at it. So I think I can say without contradiction that we're not going to turn it loose until we feel like we've got a good product to recommend to the council and for the city.
Yeah, abso- absolutely. You don't have forever, because it's never going to be perfect, but, but we need to make it as good as we possibly can and, you know, balance all of that out.
Now, Mayor, I appreciate you say it's never going to be perfect, because the, one thing that will be written into this code upon adoption by counsel, and that is, um, every year in June or July, we're going to take it off the shelf and we're going to look at it. So that it never gets stale, we never let anything sit and fester. If we know it didn't work, let's fix it. Um, part of the challenge that we've got is we've written a code and we've never tried it out. So we're going to go through real-life scenarios over the course of next year, and some of the things we think make perfect sense, we're going to sit at a table and go, what were we thinking? Um, so, uh, counsel will look to P and Z to kind of keep a running tab of those things and present a list of recommendations. Um, counsel has pledged that if we annually review these, these will be the last codes we ever need to adopt holistically, because we will, uh, tweak them annually to keep them relevant. And based on whatever state law authority we have, or maybe there's something new and improved we've never seen before that next year comes the latest and greatest thing, well, let's incorporate it in the code. And so, um, to her point, this isn't perfect. Uh, I've been doing this a long time, and I've never seen a perfect set of codes. Um, so the intent is we don't have to get hung up in trying to figure out every possible conceived idea, because we won't touch this again for 22 years. No, no, we're going to look at it every year. So, um, the intent is for us to get, um, the bulk of it right, uh, knowing that if we didn't, we'll put it on the agenda, we'll talk about it, and we'll tweak it. And so maybe that'll let some of the pressure off of trying to, to get perfect, perfect and think of every conceivable thing, because we just can't and we won't.
So in addition to, one of the things that we will be reviewing annually, that we will be counting on you guys to review annually, is not just the code, but what exceptions have you approved in the last 12 months? If you're getting the same variance request, for lack of a better term, and you've approved every single one of them, then that means we need to tweak something in the code, so it can quit being a variance and we can streamline the process. So it, it's looking at both sides of it. Wait a minute, you're at, you keep asking us this, you, we end up not having the information that we need. We need to change the process flow. Where, it's the, um, Richard will appreciate continuous improvement is, is what we call that. To, and that industrial term, uh, the city attorney says we're allowed to learn. You know, we, let's, let's make it better. That's, that's the point of doing it. So, um, I would like to then move to work item, work session item 2B, discuss Bastrop building block code schedule and policy review process expectations from City Council to Planning and Zoning Commission. Matt Jones has already go, gone over a little bit of the schedule, out of order of the agenda, I might add. But counsel, one thing that we talked about at our last meeting, that we all looked at each other and said, this is too hard, we should give this to Planning and Zoning. Here is your question. There is a large lot. It has a large house on it. It's, can it have one accessory building? Can it have three accessory buildings? Is it limited by impervious cover? Is it limited by the additional square footage? Is the sum of all the individual buildings has to be less than the square footage? And guess what? There's no right answer. And, and depending on the lot, depending on the house, you could go like, why, why wouldn't you have three little mother-in-law houses in the back if you could make parking in the back? And now, you know what you've just done? You've added affordable housing into the heart of the community where somebody can walk to work and walk to the store and walk home. So the way that we talked, I think they're called ADUs, is that what they are? So accessory dwelling units. Think about things like, how many is too many? We would like you guys to vet that, and the answer does not have to be the same for each character district. You're allowed to say, okay, this makes sense here, but that makes absolutely no sense somewhere else. Don't feel any pressure, but I feel, um, that I will already be blaming you for any dis- No, I'm kidding. We'll, we'll all be in it together, but it, y'all are the right expertise to have that conversation, and it will be helpful when you bring a recommendation, if you share a little bit of, these are the things that we think we should not ever go beyond X, Y. Give, give us some, some boundaries of, of when you guys vet things. Richard?
Yeah, Connie, on the, on the example you just put up, you said, okay, you've got a big lot, you throw two or three mother-in-law, uh, buildings in the back, and now you're in the rental business. You've just taken a individual home and you've now made it a rental property. Is that something we'd want to look at? Are you changing it from something that's a single-family dwelling to now it's a multiple-family? Did you step, you're changing the function of that piece of land?
So, um, different cities handle it in different ways. In Austin, for example, you'd have to be, uh, it'd have to be owner-occupied structure on the front primary structure in order to have this occur, where it's not rental. Um, from this perspective, though, um, I mean, those, those are policy decisions on how you would like to handle it and what the appropriate number is. And do they need to live in the front structure? Do they, you know, can you not rent them out if they don't live on site? Those, those are
And when you think of those things, and I am counting on Chairman Moore to lead you guys on this, do not come up with rules that we cannot regulate. Because I may have two kids, I may build two small houses in the back, and I do not want to have Chief Altgeld knocking on the door to find out if the person living in the mother-in-law house is related to the person living in the front.
And let me just tell you, if you do that, you have violated the Federal Fair Housing Act, and the city manager and city attorney will weigh in heavily. So my, my comment to you is this, um, stay in your lane from a land use standpoint.
And use the MATS to help you do that.
That, that's right. Because from a land use standpoint and from a nuisance perspective, do you care? How we collect the rental is a hot tax question. We have jurisdiction, and we have rules somewhere else to deal with it. So just from a land use standpoint, how does that impact you? Can we regulate it from nuisance? And if you can, do you care? And if the answer is that, no, then that's the right answer. If the answer is no, we can't regulate that by nuisance, it might be a problem, then I would argue you need to back up until you can get it in a box or clarify why the box is necessary. But there are just some things that, um, are going to fly in the face of the policy statement counsel started with. And that is, we are seeking less regulation, not more rules. So we need to make it easy for people to utilize their property and make them fiscally sustainable, not only for themselves, but for the community. And if they can do that without violating your personal property rights and how you use your property, that's back to managing by nuisance, and do we care? And that is your lane, land use. Anything outside of that, y'all have stepped beyond, Pat, Planning and Zoning, and that's counsel's job. So that's really the direction that they're needing, is in the context of a nuisance, and how does that impact you as a neighbor? So the best person to be affected by that is, would you like that next door? And if you don't care, then that's probably okay, because you're helping your neighbors with that. But if you wouldn't want that next door, they probably don't want that next door either. And that's a good place to do, but I suspect that all of you won't agree on that, and that's the beauty of all of this. Like the mayor would limit it at three, council member, uh, Lyle Nelson says somewhere about 27. So we have that same challenge on the council, and then that's the beauty of democracy.
We'll, we'll tell you the inside joke, and we've got to give Mayor Protim Nelson a, a relief. But, um, the, the important thing is not only would you like it next door to you, please talk to your neighbors. And, and so that, because the, the beauty is, we don't want just nine people's opinion. You guys have the ability to help us have a much broader reach of what matters, what would you care about, what's driving that. And to the city manager's point, if they say, well, I don't care if it's one unit or two units, I just don't want them having wild parties, ah, that's a noise, that's nuisance. That doesn't have anything to do with the two structures. That has to do with somebody not complying with our noise ordinance inside a subdivision. inside a subdivision. Does that make sense of-
It makes sense. I think that there may end up being some confusion, though, in the community because if I have my house and I have a piece of property or a structure in the back of my house that, again, could be converted into a daycare, or it could be converted into a little hair salon, I think people might be confused. It's already on my property, the structure's already there. Let's say I deed it to my son to open a barber shop in the back of it. Do I need to come get that approved, or because-
When you deed it to your son, it quits being an accessory dwelling unit and it starts being a primary structure. If it stays on your lot and is an accessory dwelling unit to your main unit, and you want your son to live there, or you've allowed him to do something that doesn't create a nuisance, do we care? That's the question. But the minute you deed and plat, it's no longer an accessory dwelling unit, it's a primary dwelling.
And is that specified somewhere so that the person living in the community that has the same question would be able to read that and understand that?
That's going to defer you to state law standards. And I was going to bring this up, so you picked me actually exactly where I wanted to go. As the planning commission was reviewing the previous subdivision ordinance, your plating section alone was over 55 pages, and then the revised subdivision ordinance that we went back and read was 70 pages of plating. We got it down to two pages because, yeah, two pages in this document. This entire book is smaller than your entire subdivision ordinance because we were able to defer to state law, and it's going to go straight to a state law determination for that state.
And the beauty of that is as state law changes, we just still reference state law, and we don't, we haven't taken a paragraph out of state law, and then it changed, so we stuck in another paragraph, and that conflicts the first paragraph. So, all of that's removed.
Mayor, if I may, as we're talking about these different buildings being built on the property, relocated, plans, I'd like to look at that and make sure the setbacks are met, and it shouldn't be a lot of things that you have to do, as long as the setbacks are met on these buildings that are built behind the main block.
Something else that we-
Which is driven by the international building codes.
And what if they're there and they don't meet the international building codes?
It's covered in here. It'd be a non-conforming structure, so.
But specifically, and I'm sorry, but specifically to her question of it turning into commercial, when you read P3, it's residential only. So, if you want to let your son live in it, no harm, no foul. If you start running, fill in the blank. It doesn't matter what it is. If it is a commercial use, you now need to come and ask for P4 zoning on that lot to allow the commercial use. It's, for those of you that have been around planning and zoning a long time, it's really weird to quit thinking about the uses. And the typical story is, we live in a society where uses are changing so fast that if you come up with a use six months, nine months from now, that use may not even exist, or you're going to have new uses that nobody thought about when you came up with the use chart. That's, it's a, you're never, ever, ever going to get it right, and that's one of the reasons to just not do it. They were telling us last night, in the current use chart of our current codes, there is, you can have a donut shop, or you can have a bakery, and those are two separate uses. Really, do you really care? So, that, we're trying to get away from the things that no one cares about and focus on the things like, "What you are doing next door to me is a nuisance, is in violation, is nothing what I expected to have within my neighborhood? You've disrupted my entire character district." That's what we're trying to regulate. Is that-
Yes, ma'am. And furthermore, what we've done is we coded in and we're regulating the key standards which are emulating these patterns, rather than focusing on the wrong elements, which we believe that the previous code was doing. You were so fine-grained regulating that you were regulating out things that you actually wanted, or, you know, maybe that you were aspiring to accomplish, and we've removed those barriers from this.
Matt, you listed a couple of things that we haven't talked about yet. You want to go over those? Probably, do you have another question?
Real quick, you mentioned a lot of the setbacks would be defined in the International Building Code, International Residential Code. That's usually setbacks between the buildings, but as far as setbacks from the property lines, what is that going to be defined?
From the side yard setbacks? Those two are from the International Building Code. They have fire separation requirements from your individual-
I mean, from the property lines?
From the front, it would be regulated by the individual place types, and so everything would be regulated by place type, yes, sir, from the property line.
Councilman Over Jones, I am so sorry. You had a question?
Another thing that we probably want to talk about, too, is parking spots, like carports, because, you know, I don't think we've really talked about that very much. And I don't know if that's something that y'all wanted to get, to give to P and Z for them to come back.
So, you might add parking and sheds, carports, garages, that type of thing?
But the thing I just wanted to point out is that I think in, one thing to think about is parking that maybe is related to the size of the building. So, if you have a tiny lot and somebody builds a 600 square foot house, we clearly don't want them to have a two-car carport, you know? And I think that's the way it is now. I think there's some sort of rule that everyone has to have a two-car carport, and it's not necessarily related to size. That was something that we talked about. So, just some-
Yeah, Matt, why don't you speak on that?
Yeah, it's just off-street parking. It doesn't specify a carport, just off-street parking. Some of the PDs require two garage spots or covered spots plus two, but I don't think any regulation we have specifically requires carports. But we would allow them if you choose to put them in the code. That's the point.
Councilman Over Jones, if you, did you have another comment? Just saying, in the past, that created a lot of problems for people because it was mandatory, but you're just talking about now it's not. So, I just thought it might be something to talk about.
Clarify.
Just to clarify. And if we don't care and if we don't want any, that's fine. I was just going to say, if you do think about it, you might want to relate it to size of structure.
Okay, now I'll just have my call for a don.
I just wanted, one thing to add to your list of discussion was the sign ordinance part, because that was definitely one of your, the items that were, needs a lot of discussion, what's in here. And the, the other thing I had a question about, and I know you asked me a long time ago, Matt, just to say something, but on the very back page of your book, about the trash, you know, the trash enclosures, I was just making sure that whatever we put in this design is okay with our trash company who's going to collect it. I don't want to ask them to build these cages and then the truck drivers say, "But I'm not going to get out there and open them," you know? I just want to make sure that we're not asking them to design something that waste management says, "Well, I'm not doing that." Just making sure.
Being married to a truck driver, he rides through town and will tell me all of the garbage enclosures that he couldn't get the truck to if he wanted to, from a truck driving standpoint. So, I think the bigger issue on the garbage collection is the placement on the lot so that the garbage truck can easily get in and get out. And sometimes we place it where it's out of sight, out of mind, and that's great for us, but the garbage company can't get it, and then it becomes a huge contractual nightmare for us. So, the challenge is the placement as much as the enclosure so that the truck can easily get in and get out, because the garbage company doesn't like them backing down anything.
We're confused over here because we think you have to drag your can to the street.
I'm sorry, you what?
We're confused because we think you're dragging your can to the street on the day anyway.
She's talking about garbage enclosures for commercial applications.
Well, no, on this one, it shows it in, is that a commercial one on the back page?
Yes.
Okay, because it doesn't look, that doesn't look like a dumpster on the very last page? That looks like-
Oh, you're just talking about the hiding them? Because if you hide them, you still are going to have to pull them to the street if they're residential.
That's where we were.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't, making sure we are clear with what we're getting.
Yes, that's fine, but from a commercial standpoint, we do need to be careful.
I just wanted to make sure that they realize that no one's going to come over there and get them out of there. That's all. I was just trying to make sure that people didn't know that. And that's why we need to vet these codes and clarify all that stuff. Okay, good stuff. Signs, we added signs, and do you want to, Matt, talk about the other ones you added that we haven't talked about yet?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I think we did touch on all of these from a nuisance standpoint, the flow chart-
I don't think we define community value nuisances.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
We talked about what nuisances, we need to clarify what's by code and what's not.
Right, right, right. So, some things I think that we can all agree are nuisances are odor, sight, or sound, light, smell, dust particulate, vibration, things of that nature. There are some things that you find in a nuisance code, such as curfews, such as whether we want to allow outdoor kennels, whether you want to allow those types of things. So, those are the types of things from a nuisance standpoint that we need P and Z's input on, and those are more of a community value, like a curfew's not necessarily a nuisance to everybody, but is that something that would be a community value to the citizens of Bastrop? So, from a nuisance standpoint, we can all agree the things that are, yes, those are clearly nuisances, but there's some things that live over in this area that just need a little bit more clarification. And we had a list of those come out. We had about a day conversation where we talked about this on a staff level, and if we're going to truly define and regulate by nuisances, these things become critically important. And so, we want to bring those all to P and Z to vet and to make recommendations to city council.
Let me add one other point. Nuisances are going to be regulated as a code enforcement item. So, Chief Alkelt will attend the planning and zoning meetings and will present the nuisance that are community values to you, for you to provide some policy direction. We would ask that you would give that to the chief at that time and not save those as part of the code regulations, because we are literally birthing triplets as codes go. The building codes, the international codes, and we're redoing all of our code ordinances, because what we have found is if we don't do all three, conflict continues, and the end game is to eradicate all of the conflict. So, the code ordinances have been reviewed identifying the nuisances, and we're pretty confident that there's not a chapter in the code ordinances we won't touch. And so, we're going to reference state law, remove all of the duplicate language, in hopes of taking a volume that's about that thick down to something that's about that thick, and the only thing that will be left are the home rule things that make us unique. But code, but the nuisance part of the codes fall under code enforcement, which falls under the jurisdiction of the Director of Public Safety, the Police Chief. So, James will come, he will get policy direction, but that's something that I would ask that y'all have that conversation in giving something to work with so that he can then bring that to council, because we're going to be adopting three different things simultaneously on different schedules. So, we appreciate your help in advance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, actually, there's, we've kind of touched on, you talked about nuisance and talked about public safety and everything. And there's one of the items that's on the last page of the packet. It talks about fences, and it says preferred at 96. What if we allowed eight-foot fences? Reducing, potential reducing nuisances, potential additional safety. I think it's something we ought to consider. We're going to be putting houses closer together, maybe it makes sense in certain neighborhoods allowing us to go to eight-foot fences.
Council, does anyone have strong feelings or let them vet that through? It could be allow it as opposed to mandate it, but I think it's a great conversation for them to have.
Yeah, the wording right now, it says privacy fences are usually 72, and maybe put in there permitted up to 96.
It would still, I would think, need to be a discussion as far as nuisance, though, because I think like, one of the, one of the examples Mayor gave last night was a car wrecking service. So, if somebody puts up an eight-foot fence and they think they can just bring old cars in their backyard because they have an eight-foot fence. Well, we all know, we see cars going back there every day, and I don't know that I would want to be living next door to that. So, it would still need to be, I think, a discussion.
If you can't see it, can't smell it, it doesn't cause vibration, no odor, particulate, why do you care?
Because of the traffic and the people that come back there.
So, your issue is not on an individual basis, but a commercial application of a wrecking yard?
I-
Yes, say yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the reason, the reason for that is, is that somebody might have a teenager that had a wreck, and the penalty is, "We're going to store your wrecked vehicle behind our eight-foot fence until you raise money to fix it." And in that instance, on a case-by-case basis, we would argue from a code enforcement standpoint, that's not a problem. But on a commercial application, if they're bringing junk vehicles in there all the time, you bet. But those are the distinctions that are really important to make, because what the chief will tell you is the devil's in the details. He's got to be able to write a citation that's enforceable when we take it to municipal court that the prosecutor will prosecute, and he references the law. So, the clarity is supremely important.
And in that case, it would be, you are running a commercial business in P3, which does not allow commercial business, and it, I would even make a case that it could be a hazard because of gas and oil and, you know, and all that kind of stuff. So, okay. It's 7:45. I think if you can do those last three, we can all get out of here.
Yeah. So, tree preservation, that ties back into geographically sensitive. It also ties back into flood mitigation. So, we just don't have any current regulations on what that looks like. So, what type of trees do we want to preserve? Historic trees? Are there certain species of trees? If you cut down trees, you have to replace trees. I know this is also a hot legislative topic. I don't think that they're going after at this time, so we might be able to do this for another couple of years, but it really does make a huge impact on the way that you develop a piece of property when you have to take into consideration developing around groves of trees or different things like that.
And you may also, that's also something that you may look at different character districts.
That's correct.
Because if it's houses that are close together and somebody wants to cut down all the three trees that are in front of their house, that's different than if you're living out, like where I live, and we're on eight acres. I don't want to have to come get a permit because the wind has knocked over a three-inch hackberry. I mean, you just, you've got to have a balance and be reasonable. And it, when my husband cuts down the hackberry, because he will, no one in the whole world is ever going to know it and see it. Do you care and do you want to try to regulate that?
I think the comments would be the lob-lolly pines that are really sensitive. That's a geographically sensitive area that's a brand to Bastrop.
And unique.
And unique, that's right. That's something that would, in my opinion, weigh, way heavier, more heavy than the hackberry tree, and those are the things we're looking for.
Accessory dwelling units, I think we touched on that, and so we got some pretty good parameters. The street sections, Matt talked about that there's about 12 of them. We will start taking a look at things. Some of them are allowed in place types, some of them are not. For example, in a P3 neighborhood or a P1 neighborhood, do you need sidewalks on both sides? Is it okay to have a sidewalk on one side? I mean, I think you can cross the street relatively safe at an intersection and get to one street. You know, that ties back into being fiscally sustainable. You know, you've got to maintain those guys. So, just taking a look at the street sections, making sure we're not missing anything. Again, this is-
And is 12 too many?
Is 12 too many?
Is that, make it to conflict?
I think our Public Works Director would be okay with less than that. I don't know. That's a lot of street types to have to maintain. And then, and then signs. And I think, you know, we got some, I think we can all venture to guess what that means. Signs are a hot topic. Make sure we're not missing anything to go over and how they apply to the different place types and development regulations and standards.
What was the flow chart going to be on?
The flow chart is a development process flow chart.
So, I have an infill development, what's my step one, what's my step two? Kind of, I would call it Bastrop Development for Dummies, right? I mean, a really easy step-by-step. Development 101, that would be much more politically correct.
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah, that, so erase that first part. Okay, so I think that's essentially hitting to be, council. Any other words of wisdom you want to share with P and Z?
Did you have a schedule of when they were doing that? That was part of it?
He rattled it off, but you need-
So, if we had input on some of those things, when did he want us to tell him?
I'm sorry, what was your comment?
So, they're going to have a meeting tomorrow night. They're scheduled to meet on May 6.
June 6.
June 6, I'm sorry. They're scheduled to meet on June 22, and our request would be that they would wrap up and make recommendations at their last meeting in June.
June 27?
Excuse me. You may have to-
June 27 is their regularly scheduled meeting in June.
And then the request would be, is that we have a joint meeting at your July night meeting for them to hand over the recommendation, because we have to stay on schedule. And if, and if they're going to delay that, then there has to be a conversation between the commission and your schedule to- the commission and your schedule to make that happen.
And the idea would be, we're touching base at July night. The goal is, you're handing it off, and, and if you're not ready to hand it off, let's talk through the two or three things that are left, and come up with a schedule, but we're, you know, like, again, we, we don't want, it's not a lifelong career, we're, we're trying, trying to get through these.
Um, I'm going to make a point of reference. June twenty-second is the Juneteenth celebration weekend.
No, ma'am, it's June fifteenth. It's the third Saturday, and the first Saturday is the first, the eighth, and the third Saturday's the fifteenth.
We actually, I'm on the committee, it's the twenty-second. The twenty-first is the banquet, and the twenty-second is the parade.
Um, we need whoever's on the committee to get with the chief tomorrow, muy pronto, because we have no knowledge, and have built a whole lot of plans, and we, um, and we have a pop-up schedule, and the makeup day is all contingent on Juneteenth, even when Juneteenth always is.
And the sign on the bridge has the third Saturday.
So, our ability to help you may not be what you want. So, please have somebody get with the chief tomorrow.
I will.
What, manager? Uh, I'm going to say the car show is still going to go on, on, uh, June fifteenth.
I have one, one just, uh, clarification, so, you kind of brought up a scenario, if we're taking a lot, and somebody wants to add an accessory dwelling unit, and Bastrop has various sizes of lots, if we start to think about it in terms of maybe a percentage, is that an appropriate way to think about it?
Absolutely. And, and the, if you will gear, in my opinion, if you'll gear your thought process to something that is applicable to, and, whereas, it's no more than an impervious cover of X, it's no more than this percentage of the lot, it's a percentage of the primary structure, those kind of things that are, make it consistently applicable, I think it makes it a whole lot easier on them, and a whole lot easier to enforce. Yes, great idea, vet it, talk through it. Is that okay with you guys? Okay. Chairman Moore, any, any, you want to visit with your people, any other questions, any other things?
I think we have a good start, and we've got a lot of work to do, and don't forget, we're also reviewing the comprehensive plan, often, so, we have some work to do.
The one final request that I have, and y'all may have already done it, so I apologize in advance. Matt has several PowerPoint decks that are really helpful and useful. Does P and Z have access to them somewhere, either on the building Bastrop site, or on a P and Z site? Can we make that? I think some of them would like to have access to them.
Yeah, we can give them access to Dropbox.
Okay. Would that be helpful to y'all? Okay.
Excuse me. Chairman Moore, um, I have a question. So, you said that you have this, you know, the reviewing of this, and then you said something about the comp plan, are you just sort of putting out what it is that y'all are doing? Because I would have thought that you would be doing the comp plan review after this. Is that what you're thinking, or?
No, we're taking chapters four, five, and six right now. We're, we're discussing chapter four, um, tomorrow night, and, um, we don't have a set timetable, but we are going, going to be reviewing it this year.
Part, part of the ordinance is requests that they review it annually, doesn't mean that they have to make any recommendations. Chapter four is housing, uh, not a lot of updates, probably, but we have a, a schedule, um, and the ones that are pertinent to things that'll be, uh, changed or updated in the land use plans, we will wait until after the adoption of the new codes for those.
Mayor and council, if that were to become a, a reason for them to not meet your schedule, would y'all consider amending the requirement that requires them to do that, so that there's a pressure to do it?
What she's saying a different way is, yes, it's more important to get the codes done than it is to do the comp plan review, because-
I just said we didn't have a set schedule, that we had to do anything on the, on the comp plan, other than fulfilling the, the, what's in the comp plan that we review it. And quite frankly, looking at some of these housing, some of the things that are contained in housing, it's complementary with some of the things that have been built that are not, in my opinion, comporting with what the intent was for some of the new developments. So, we're going to take it tomorrow night and have further discussion on it.
That's fine. Um, and, we just don't want to wear you guys out. Yeah, this is a priority, and we don't want to wear you guys out, because we want you guys to continue to want to serve, so, and I appreciate that, and, and anything we can do now to help making any tweaks to it, that's just benefits all of us. So, all right, any other questions from planning and zoning?
Matt, I just wanted to ask you on the agenda tomorrow night, uh, so, when we were talking about we're continuing on from tonight, that's going to be on item four, on discussion from the city council, is that what the agenda item is?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Anything else?
Dr. Lasting, you've been very quiet.
Just enjoying my time here.
And on that note, councilmember Peterson, I'm ready for your favorite motion.
Mayor, I'm listening to a jury.
City council is adjourned.
A motion from P and Z to adjourn? Make a motion, adjourn. Anybody that wants to stay can, but we're leaving.
Seven fifty-six, and we're adjourned. Thank you, guys, and let's have a round of applause for the Matts and their staffs.